Look at that beard.
Hi Scott.
I love it. And the chief, hi chief.
Hey chief.
Good to see you.
Hello everybody, hi.
I was gonna ski, cross-country ski in tonight, but.
Yeah.
You could've come down.
Snowshoes?
Had enough going on today.
Dan.
Dean. All right, I call this meeting towards seven o'clock. Jamie, you wanna let anybody in that needs to be in? All right, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now clerk, call the roll.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
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 Here. All right, consent agenda, you have the consent agenda approval of the regular minutes from January the 10th. I've gotten a correction to Jamie regarding a motion that was corrected, so I've gotten that to her. We also have accounts payable, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Leo's motion of support, Stanton a second, discussion. I'm sorry? Yes, we're Beckon and Beckon, it was Beckon and you, so, yep, caught it. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please call roll, madam clerk, looks like a roll call on that.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we received staff reports from the city manager, treasurer, planning and zoning, DPW, fire police, and the engineer, any questions for the manager of this report? Like it, all right, any questions up for the treasurer? Oh, planning and zoning? DPW, hi Scott, I see you're on. How are you doing with the snow?
Hey, we're doing okay, it's pretty, been pretty light this year.
It's pretty, pretty light?
Yeah, it hasn't, it hasn't been as bad as previous years.
Okay, very good, and I, you've been, you've been receiving a few very positive remarks from some of our constituents, I see.
We're very appreciated.
All right, very good, anything for Scott, yes?
I do have a question, hey Scott, so I started, how are you?
Good, how are you Ross?
Good question, how much is, how much of a problem, we seem to have a bit of a appliance issue without even parking on our streets? How much of an issue is that caused by the cloud drivers?
Yeah, it's a good question, it's not so much of an issue with our, with our fleet, you know, we just simply go around them. What's more of an issue is that by the time we veer around a parked car, oftentimes there's enough snow that takes up maybe three or four parking spaces, so really the negative impact of it is later on in the day, after we're long gone, it, so, it'd be more of an issue for the residents and business owners that are trying to enjoy downtown.
Thank you, I did have a conversation with Brett, I think Brett's on call this evening, but, you know, did express some concern, because it does cause some issues with parking spaces, as Scott said, and I asked that, there'd be some additional enforcement of that, just to notify drivers that it, they need to be parking on the proper side of the street, given the.
When you say who, Brett?
Right.
Oh, I think lieutenant.
Yeah, lieutenant Ensfield, lieutenant Ensfield, got it.
I think that's something we need to be a little bit more on top of.
Okay, yep, I know we've got the signs posted right on either side of the road as far as parking for that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Signs being drawn.
Well, yeah, all right, planning and zoning, anything for Cindy Osmond, I know she's on the phone, I saw her, anything?
Well, I would just add from the planning commission standpoint, that we had a very good conversation this past Thursday about 2020, 22 and 23 goals for the planning commission.
Ross, I'm gonna stop you there and have you do that under boards and commissions and committees, okay? If you would, please, all right, fire, I see we've got the chief, chief, thanks so much for your report, you've had a busy day out there on the highway. How you doing?
I'm doing okay, unlike Salt Lake City, it seems to be snowing on the highway.
Yeah, very good, anything, any questions for the chief while we've got him, really appreciate you being here, really appreciate your report, appreciate your time, anything for the fire chief? Nope, I hear you've had like 14 straight days without a break and you're very slow, low on staff.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, you holding up okay?
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you, lieutenant Ensfield, do we have him on the line? Saw a number. Hi there.
Hey, I'm John. I did hear you.
Hey Brett, we're having a hard time hearing you. You there?
I think it's all good.
We'll leave it at that, all right, very good, and then the engineering airport, and I really appreciate the amount of detail in the engineering report, so, much appreciated, anything for the engineer? All right, very good, with that, agenda changes, I'd just like to note, we have two very special guest speakers today, our county clerk Bob Janetski and county commissioner Cappinga will be joining us here quickly, so that'll be an addition, and then, other than that, I understand we are not having a closed session.
That's correct.
All right, all right, very good, all right, what's that? County clerk, Janetski.
Shot clock?
Yeah, well, we'll see if he can, he's a hockey player, he knows all about a shot clock, he knows, he'll be, he'll be brief.
Thank you very much, madam mayor, honorable members of council, Bob Janetski, with a brief update from your county clerk's office, I appreciate the opportunity. You'll notice in front of you that you have a copy of our annual report from 2020, would have loved to have given that to you a little earlier, but due to COVID shutdowns and, and not being able to get out as much as we'd like, you're just getting this information now. I won't read the entire thing in front of you, because I know that councilman Gardner likes to take that at home and, and enjoy that with his family, so, I don't wanna deny him that opportunity, however, I would look you to take a look at page 27, in the section of the register of deeds report, understand that I oversee the four different divisions at the county office of the register of deeds, the elections, vital records, and the circuit court records division as well, on this page 27, if you take note of the monies collected from recordings in the register of deeds office in 2020, you'll note that, that far right column there, beginning with the 5,800,000 that went to the state for state real estate transfer tax, those are all record numbers, so in the year 2020, for real estate transactions throughout Alleghen County, we set records in the amount of money we took in, and the amount of land transactions that were transferred across the county, and I will tell you that we passed up all of those numbers as of July in this past year, 2021, wanted to bring that to your attention. There's a lot more good stuff in there, and I know you wanna read that section on your own, would next like you to please turn to the vital records section, and wanted to draw your attention to a service that doesn't get a whole lot of attention, but my office provides a free service of recording DD 214s or papers of honorable discharge for your veterans, and I don't know if lieutenant Fox has got his DD 214 down, or excellent, all right, it's in a different county, the important thing is that it's recorded. So if you are aware of any veterans in the area, at the Am Legion post or the VFW, please encourage him or her to take that trip down to the county building, it's a quick 10-minute transaction, it's entirely free, they bring their original DD 214s, must be the original to be recorded, we give them the original back, we provide two certified copies, and then for the life of the veteran and, and his or her dependents, we provide free copies so that they can secure and access veterans' benefits as easy as possible, and we're thrilled to do that, and I believe we hit a record last year as far as the number of DD 214s recorded despite COVID, so that was a challenge, I will let you enjoy the rest of your annual report all by yourself, perhaps over a beverage or two. We do have a new service through our office now, madam mayor, you can go online at alleghencounty.org, go to the 48th Circuit Court Records Division and look up circuit court cases, you know, in the past, people weren't able to do that, that just came online within the past couple of months, you can look up register of actions, as well as different defendants and divorce proceedings as well, so, up until just a few months ago, people were dependent on either coming into our office or, or calling us, they were basically secured to those eight to five hours to find out that information, we're excited to have that online, we also have a new service for our veterans that I didn't mention, the new veterans ID cards issued through the Alleghen County clerk's office, when that veteran brings down his or her honorable discharge paper will, if they request it, we will take a picture of them, put it on our veterans ID card, and they can use that for discounts throughout Alleghen County and throughout the state and the country, we'll give them a list of providers throughout the county that already offer that discount. In 2021, we did have several elections in the city, we had the city council elections in November, you had 255 voters turn out to be serviced here, that was roughly 29% of the 877 registered voters you had in the city at that time, the August ballot for the library millage renewal only drew out about 23% of voters, or roughly 200 people taking part in that, I did wanna warn you, mister manager, the brand-new tabulators are now entering their fifth year of existence, and they're not cheap, we were able to pay for those five years ago with HAVA monies that was set aside, so basically the county got a grant from the state to purchase that, so we used state and federal taxpayer money, sparing the cities and townships any money for having to pay for tabulators or voter assist terminals, we are now entering the fifth year of that contract, which is the last year of free maintenance within that, it's possible, depending on when your machines were delivered, that you're going to be out of free maintenance really soon, and you'll need to start budgeting for that maintenance, in addition, these machines are supposed to last about 10 years, we managed to eke a few more elections out of the last machines, but I wanted to encourage council strongly, as I know councilwoman Stanton likes long-range planning and budgeting, we, I wanna encourage council to start putting money aside long-term for tabulators and voter assist terminals, because I don't see the likelihood of, of any more state or federal taxpayer money being set aside for that, finally, I would like to commend you, your, your county commissioner does an absolutely phenomenal job of advocating for you on a daily basis down there at the county commission, and commissary Cappinga has done a phenomenal job of making sure that taxpayers from the Kitter, Sagatuck area are heard, with that, I'll take any questions or concerns you have of the county clerk or register of deeds office.
Any questions? I, I have a question, what, so what are we looking at relative, as far as cost for the voting machines, do you know roughly?
The tabulators, when we purchased them last, were about $5,000 a tabulator, I believe most recently you started running an absentee voter counting board, so you now own two, am I making that up?
We don't have, do we have an AV board? Township does. An AV board.
Do you have a total of one tabulator?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the township.
That and one voter assist terminal.
Got it, okay, and so both are relatively about the same?
They're about the same, yeah, my, my guess is prices only go up.
Of course, of course, all right, great.
Anything else?
Really appreciate it, thanks for coming, it's good to see you.
Good to see everybody.
All right. Page 31. Oh my god. Very good, thank you. Mister Commissioner, hi, good to see you.
Good seeing you. We are in the business as you are, as I just heard, as far as, we'll change this to the, your planning session, we're just in the middle of doing all the things you're doing, as far as, we have a five-year strategic plan, we're two years within that, but then we try to go, where are we at within that, what are we gonna do this year, and then we also try to just analyze how we did last year, and then I'll, obviously looking at our budgets concerning all that, and then our, our big thing is our Oprah funds, I've mentioned that to you before, we have $23 million, we're really looking at broadband and water, but, but as you'd have that money, we have many, many, many people saying, spend it for this, spend it for this, spend it for this, I had the pleasure of going with your superintendent to the Holland pool, if you haven't had a chance to take that tour, take it, what that's gonna mean for our families, I know your school system runs your kids through it, but even for your families to go down there and use it, it is like going to a holodeck with the new playland they have for kids to go, and your whole family can go into a room, and I was just so impressed with it, but take the tour as a group, I think you'd love it, it's very good, but on this paper in front of you are the accomplishments that we had last year, and as you're busy, I don't wanna go through every one of them, I'm just giving you the time to read through it yourself, but I like it, just to take you to the first page, to the fourth bullet point, I can just go through some ones I just wanna highlight to you, just to, just to say a few things about it, the first one, a circuit court was able to conduct numerous jury trials despite the pandemic, if you were to look at other court systems, they didn't function like we did, we were very efficient, if you took the surveys of the people that went, they were safe and going, and my hats just off to Marge Baker, all the different judges that made it still run efficiently within what it's doing, the new courthouse Sally Port system, as far as, if you've looked there, we have a new centralized place to go in, and I know Bob lost a couple rooms out of it, but it's a beautiful place for safety, for everyone to go in the same place, and then, for all the years that I was with the sheriff's department, you had to be outside, take the prisoner outside the car, go in the courthouse, it was very unsafe, now we have a Sally Port, where you get two cars in there, and then we have a stairway going up to the court systems, and then up there, we have cells, the cells weren't big enough, so we increased the cell size, put a Sally Port in, put a centralized entrance in, you'd see it, you'd say, first class, way to go, I mean, this, I think it's done very well, then I'd hope all of you would just go to alleghencounty.org, look at this new website that we have, and I've had comments from just many people just going, it is 10 times better, it's just touching to it and seeing all what's within it, just for you and for your constituents as far as to go to, and then, we demolished Rock 10, if you take a look at that, that's been a huge project for us to finally get that off, you know, as far as what we're doing to finally create a space, that we can create a new space from it, that's a big accomplishment, and then Bob, I don't know what you're using, but we have a new e-ticket system for tickets that you might get from the sheriff's department, but even for the clerk's office, they have their own system, instead of driving in, you can send it through the e-ticket system that they have. And then I'd just like to go to, if you look at the bottom, county recruitment stats, you look at, everyone's having issues with employees, as far as, I just came from meeting out of Lansing today, where some counties are having 90 people that they can't replace, 80 people that can't replace, these are normal turnover rates that we have, but I think that, if Bob were to explain, we have 12 different unions, and we just settled a three-year contract, I think we gave the, the largest raises that we've given since we've been there, but to get within the realm of what we need to do to keep employees, we had to do that, I think we're much within reason of what we did and how we did it.
Okay.
But I just wanna thank you for letting me speak, I can read through this, very proud of it, and I hope you had a good meeting, any questions for me?
Any questions? I, I already congratulated you on your new role, I don't know if it's new or return, or?
I was chair before, and I've been a vice chair before, but what's very special for me is I'm vice chair again this year, commissioner's story is from the Holland Township, and we work very well together, so I'm looking forward to being a partner with him, and just trying to do whatever we can, and I just wanna, there's many of you that I haven't had a chance just to sit down and meet, but just so I just go through, my role again is, my role really is to communicate what's going on in the county, but even bigger than that, if you go, man, how can the county help us with something, I have to be one that can go and say, hey, what is it? Let me try to dig into that and see how I can help you, and just know I'll follow through with it, I'll do what you ask me to do, and I'll get back to you, so make sure you use me as a resource to you to, to see a topic that you're going, that comes associated to us in this way, maybe they can help us, I'm supposed to be the person that jumps on that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much, appreciate it, thanks guys, all right, with that, public comment on any agenda item? Anybody would like to say anything on agenda items here in the chambers? Anybody online, if you are interested, please raise your hand, looks like the clerk is, okay, very good, all right, Glenna?
Yes, hi, thanks, good evening, Glenna DeYoung, city of Sagatuck, I wanna speak on agenda item 12H, wanna say thanks and great work for the, to the Blue Star Trail Committee for moving this project along, I think you've done a great job with the process and getting feedback, and after years, it looks like this project is really close to fruition, so if Department of Transportation recommends that we should increase the contribution to $50,000, meaning 40,000 more from the city of Sagatuck, I absolutely think we should do it, you know, the only way to get this done is to really get the TAP grant, and if that's what they recommend to increase the chances, then I think that's what we need to do. I also wanna say that Marcia's here with me, we're just sharing the same screen, so would you like her to go next?
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, this is Marcia Casper, city of Sagatuck, and I'm also here to talk about agenda item 12H, the Blue Star Trail Project, and yeah, first, I also wanna thank the full committee, I know there's members from Sagatuck, Douglas, Sagatuck Township, along with the Alleghen County Roads and the contractor, and I agree there, you're doing great work, and in particular, from Sagatuck, I wanted to thank Holly Leo, Ken Truster, and Ryan Heiss, representing Sagatuck, you're doing us proud, and I support the work of the Blue Star Trail Committee, you are doing great work, and this is gonna help for development in Sagatuck, Douglas, and the township, and with that support, I also support the mission and the dollars that increase that you need, as recommended from the DOT, going from 10 to 50,000 from the city of Sagatuck for suggested more trees, and also the contingency increases for the boardwalk and grading, as expected, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks Glenna, thanks Marcia. Richard Donovan, please sir, how you doing?
Thank you, madam mayor, doing well, on behalf of the Friends of the Blue Star Trail, I wanna thank you all for your continued support, and as the two previous commentators noted, your group, Holly and Ryan and Ken have done a great job with the committee, we're very gratified to see the way the three communities worked together on that committee last year and the progress we made, it's clear that the vast majority of the tri-community residents feel strongly that the trail should be built, so we, we also urge you to approve the resolution for an additional condition, conditional commitment by the city, it's not unusual in large projects like this for there to be changes along the way, just like MDOT is, is suggesting, and especially when you're dealing with a government agency, the good news is, as you may hear from, from member Leo, and I see Larry Fox is also on, the good news is that we got a good report from MDOT staff that gave us a clear signal, not a guarantee, but a clear signal that they want this project to be built, and they want to fund it, and as previous commentators noted, you know, you, you should listen to what the, the guy with the money says, and MDOT is gonna pay 70% of this, and they're giving us advice about how to best position our grant applications, so we, we should listen to them, it's much more easier to ask for more grant money upfront than to find ourselves short at the end when we go out to bid, and we understand this request came up kinda quickly, unfortunately, you know, we had to just follow MDOT's schedule, our engineers worked very quickly, as soon as they got the information from MDOT, we can't control their timing, and as, as member Leo may explain later, the increased commitment is still a very minor portion of the whole project, percentage-wise, and it's a much smaller share than what municipalities usually contribute to projects of this kind. The other thing, just to point out, and others may notice, note this too, but if we meet this deadline that MDOT has, the way they work, it's on a quarterly basis, so, we could slip into the next quarter, if that happens, it's a potential loss of three months' time, and in the meantime, other projects will be up for approval and could receive commitments, and so, some of the money that the feds allocate to MDOT for the TAP grant program for 2022 may get allocated before they get to our application, and that would not be such a good thing, and of course, with this economy, if three more months means prices are just gonna go up a little bit more, so, we think, you know, under these circumstances, all the, all the people that have been in, supported the trail up till now, would certainly endorse the idea of putting in this small additional commitment from the city, and who knows, you may be able to get some of it back from the township later on, thank you very much.
Thanks, Richard, appreciate it, madam clerk, anybody else? All right, very good, thanks everybody, appreciate you calling in, all right, with that, we have no introduction of ordinances, no public hearings, and no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. For folks who are here and who are on the line, we had the workshop on Wednesday, and there was a good deal of discussion relating to all these items, except for the last one, item H, so with that, we'll start off with the Kalamazoo Lake Sewer and Water Authority reappointment.
Go, go for it, I think we're on page 18, of your agenda packet.
Yeah. Basically, this appointment's a reappointment, we did, as you discussed the other day, did open this up for other applications, none were received, Mark Beckon is a reappointment, and he happily agreed to do so, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this appointment.
Madam mayor. Lauren? Motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Mark Beckon as presented.
All right, very good, first from Stanton, a second from Gardner, any other discussion? All right, with that, I think this is just a voice vote, right, voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, all right, very good, the next is also a reappointment, same procedure, reappointment of Nico Leo, who's been on the board since I was on many years ago, and is now the chair, also reapplied and happily agreed to do so, we opened it up for applications, no other folks applied, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve Mr. Leo to the board review.
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Nico Leo as presented.
Second.
Motion from Dean, a second from Stanton, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, with that, we'll move on to the summer tax collection for auto era, area ISD.
Page 25, the recommendation, recommendation is presented there, and stands.
Page 20. All good, all good, again, this was discussed in detail, this is pretty standard practice, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and enter into an agreement. into an agreement between the City of Sagatuck, Sagatuck Public Schools, and the OAISD for collection of the 2022 summer tax levies at a rate of $2.75 per parcel.
I'll second.
All right, a motion by Leo and a second by Dean. Any discussion?
I would just add that at the workshop, there was some discussion around whether this is an annual event for the council. It was stated that, yes, it is. By statute, we have to do this every year. It was whether there's an opportunity to extend this, we didn't have to deal with it every year. But unfortunately, from a statute standpoint, we have to do this every year, so.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, with that, voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passes. All right, Item D, Wicks Park Boat Slips. Mr. Manager, you want to talk about the schedule of fees?
We had discussion at the workshop. Our recommendation is staff stands.
Okay, very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor. Motion to approve amending the City of Sagatuck's schedule of fees as follows. Wicks Park Boat Slip Lease, $1,800 for residence rate and $2,000 for non-resident.
All right. Motion by Stanton. Please, second.
Second.
All right, second by Leo. Any discussion?
Well, as we talked about in the workshop, I think as long as we commit to any repairs that need to be done to the boat slips, whether that's new boards or new cleats or anything that needs to be done, and just make sure that we're on top of that in the spring. And then if there's any issues with low water levels for once, we should address some of those issues that might come up because of that.
Yep, very good. So noted.
Yes, I would also add to that, that I would suggest that we, after Scott, a member of his staff, has had an opportunity to go down and assess what's viewed, just to actually include that with the applications when people are asking for applications. So when they're thinking about applying for the lottery, they can see, okay, there's some influence that the city is earmarked for that, before they commit to actually submitting the application. Number two is I think we should suggest that we have these repairs completed by, probably say, the end of April. So I'm not sure when they first start. When do the slips?
April. I believe it's April.
Yeah, I think it's important to make sure that we get that done before they actually start using the slips.
Yeah. I do think that we need to set a deadline on this because people are quite anxious to know where they're going to or not going to put a boat. So I think the sooner we can get the application process rolling and do the lottery drawing, the better. So I think we do need to agree to have a date when we're going to do this as opposed to, you know, not having it established when we're going to get this assessment done.
Yes, Scott raising his hand?
I've laid out all the dates on the application.
Okay. Great.
For the lottery.
Okay.
And then the drawing is February 28th, and then I will give them until March 11th.
Okay.
So I've kind of set those dates up.
Okay. Very good. I appreciate that. And I want to be careful to be considered of Scott Herbert's schedule and the weather. We heard the discussion, because I wrote it down in my notes from that meeting. That's an understanding that those repairs will occur. And I think we just allow Scott and the manager to let us know when those occur and try to have those ready sooner rather than later, weather permitting and schedule permitting.
So, yeah, yes, great. Mayor, I think this begs the question then, I mean, Ryan, is this date reasonable given the ask?
As a guy who doesn't do the maintenance, I would say that's pretty reasonable. I don't, I think Scott probably has gone to bed because he's been snowplowing.
Yeah.
But I would, I would think that given the small amount of maintenance, the small amount of maintenance with cleats and repairing boards, I think we can handle it, so.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Very good, very good. All right, with that, voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Next, hi there. How you doing? You're just visiting? We didn't know if maybe Lieutenant Enfield sent you, since he sounded like he was like on a basketball court or something like that. No.
Good to have you here.
Everybody's behaving themselves, so, all right.
Not getting too rowdy in here.
Yeah. Item E, chain ferry agreement. With that, Mr. Manager.
I think that's page 32.
Yes.
All right. So we talked about this at the workshop. There were some questions about the dollar amount related to the capital improvement. Russ, I think you asked those questions. We did get an email from Sean Steele. And and so I also confused his, his ask for, he's asking for a five-year extension rather than a two-year extension. I confused that. So the recommendation is from 2024 to 2026. But if I add another three years to that, that'd be 2029. My math is correct. If you want to take more time to work through this one, let me know. But the recommendation or the sample motion would be to extend the chain ferry operation agreement end date from May 13, 2024 to May 13, 2029.
Okay. Very good. I'm assuming that everybody got this today?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody can see the significant number of costs that are involved that Sean, Mr. Steele himself, is going to cover, which is very generous. So with that, I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll go from there. We'll have discussion.
I could.
Yes.
Motion to extend the existing chain ferry operations agreement end date from May 13, 2024 to May 13, 2029.
Okay, very good. Motion by Stanton?
I'll second.
Second by Dean. All right. Any discussion? Before I, actually, I'll start off. I did pull out my minutes, my meeting notes from December the 8th from the packet. In the manager's report, Sean had provided us and Ryan included in there his yearly upgrades and repairs to the chain ferry. So there's for 2019, 20, 20, and 21, and then upcoming 2022. And so I'll have you refer back to that packet December the 8th. So as I mentioned, Mr. Steele has done quite a bit. And, you know, seems to be very committed to keeping that in tip-top shape. All right, any discussion?
Two questions. One is I did not get the email.
No, it was.
Everybody got it.
I did not.
Okay. The capital improvements you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm mistaken. Two is I do have a bit of a concern going out to 2029. I think from the private partnership, a lot can happen in eight years. And this is no disrespect against Mr. Steele. I am concerned about the extension out to 2029. I don't know if the city has a policy for specific agreements with private operation of city assets. It just eight years seems from today. A lot can go on in eight years. And I know there is a determination clause in here, which we certainly do not want to use. I just would want to consider this before I would agree to.
Any other discussion?
I think the ask of 28,000, he's planning on fixing $28,000 worth of repairs to the chain ferry. And I know he plans on fixing things in the years to come, and it's all on him. I, committing that kind of money to it and the kind of staff and what it takes to staff that all summer long, it's a big commitment. And I understand why he wants to see into the future, spending that kind of money on the chain ferry. So that's why I'm voting in favor of it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, motion by Stanton, second by Dean. This is a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so noted. All right.
Can I please just make a comment regarding my mobile?
Sure.
This is not a reflection of Mr. Steele's operations area. It has to do with the extension. That was not brought to our attention.
Got it. All right, Item F, expanded outdoor dining areas. Again, good discussion on this the other evening. Mr. Manager.
Page 39. And staff is not expecting a vote on this item tonight. But what we did provide is a reflection of what we heard from the workshop. So that's on page 43.
43.
So the purpose of our presentation as it relates to this item is, this is what we heard. We'll take any comments back, and then we're going to present something at the next meeting. So are we good? I mean, are we missing something? Anything else?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to talk about, and it was a question that we brought up at the workshop, and that's whether we would allow people to do just say July and August as opposed to the entire season of the outdoor area, April through November. And the more I thought about it, the more I thought that would be really a pain for staff to try to track down people. If, you know, if they had an outdoor space, July and August, and all of a sudden we're going after them because they still have a, you know, space set up, you know, the following months and having to track all those people down, I would be more in favor of making it the entire length of the pop-up patio timeframe. So that was the only thing that I needed some time to stew on.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. And correct me, was it April 1st?
April 1st through November 30th.
Oh, is that long?
Yeah, it's that long. What ends up happening is, you know, the weather stays nice a little bit longer than you think. And then there's the hopefulness of the spring, and I think that's why everybody wanted it to be as long as it was.
Okay, other thoughts, comments?
Yeah.
Just a comment. I've had a few constituents mention to me, they think, and Russ made this comment at our workshop, that the comment was that 200 seemed a bit low to some constituents, given the amount of revenue that can be generated by these patios.
So when I was doing the math, though, if you do one parking spot for the entire time, the least amount you'll pay is $1,600.
Right.
It seems like a fair amount if you're, you know, that's one spot. But if you're using up, say, four, you know, diagonal parking spots for the entire time, that's $6,400.
Right.
So it just seemed like it was a fair amount to me. And those who wouldn't use it to its fullest extent will opt not to do it. And I think that was the point of us making it a little bit higher. So the people who are really using it will use it, and those who aren't will opt not to do it.
And I can see a range in terms of the benchmarking we did, but I do want to just relay that comment from some other, including some business owners.
Sure.
Well, I would just like to say that, I mean, we are, this is uncharted territory, and I think we need to allow ourselves some grace here as we move through. And we may adjust accordingly at the end of the season and really see what's working and what type of feedback we get.
Yeah.
This is a work in progress.
I would consider the council not to stand about the, and I said either all in or you're not. Maybe that's not the best way to approach it, but I think if someone's going to make a moment to have standard outdoor dining, they'd do so for that entire time period. As well as that commits them, and it may lead out some people that are thinking, well, if I have to commit to $1,800, whatever the amount's going to be, they may think twice about doing that. Really committed in doing this. So I still support that approach. I think that's, I think it's a good way to make sure that we do it appropriately. Yeah, I've had conversations with residents as well as the business owners that use this. And business owners are like, they didn't think twice about the amount because I think it's, whether it's too low or too high, I don't know, they don't even blink at it. But residents, like council members, Dean said, they're like,
I don't think this is a revenue generating opportunity, but it does have to reflect what it costs the city to manage the program. And I think to your point, Councilman Leo, is that it's a work in progress. We may find that what it costs us to actually manage this program is in excess of what, and that's not to say we couldn't also reduce the fee if we find that, I mean, that's that balance that we're still trying to strike, right? So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with both of you. We're making our best guess.
Yeah, and I.
Like all in or all out.
Yeah, and both our attorneys and then also the staff have basically recommended that the fee be placed on the use of on-street public parking spaces be directed towards public transit, specifically interurban bus service, which we've all agreed that if there's a way that we can provide for a little bit more coverage from them, that would be really excellent. And I think this is a really good way to do that, and of course, pay for some of the staff time. But again, I appreciate, you know, Kate's work on this and Ryan, your work on this. Much appreciated. I consider this our second reading. So probably at our next official council meeting on a Monday, we'll vote, go ahead and have, get this done so that businesses can make their plans accordingly. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
All right. All right, very good. No vote needed on that one. Item G, Verizon Small Cell Agreement.
Oh, that's an exciting one. Madam Mayor, if I may. So page 48. We have two of the three. So we only have two presented tonight, but there's going to be in total three. Verizon Small Cell Technology. So the motion is to approve and/or deny the location of the proposed small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way at 561 Francis and 253 Spear Street on existing utility poles.
Okay, right. I'll entertain a motion to get us started.
Motion to approve the location of proposed small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way at 561 Francis and 253 Spear Street on existing utility poles.
Second.
All right, motion by Leo and a second by Stanton. Any discussion? Good question. Third one, right over here?
Right, right across from City Hall by, yeah.
And did Verizon say why they chose those locations?
Oh, based on science.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't ask me.
They have some reason why that's a great spot.
Yeah, they do, they do their thing. Yeah, don't ask me.
Yeah, but it's going to improve. We're hoping.
That's the goal, of course.
Please, let it happen.
The whole reason they do.
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know if there's a way to raise my hand.
Oh, I think we have a representative from Verizon tonight.
Hi, Fred.
Hey, Fred.
All right.
Let's bring up Fred.
Fred, well, I'm representative for Verizon Wireless. I was just going to address the question. It is science. With the RF, with the RF engineers do, we have a computerized model of the coverage that is within the City of Sagatuck. And what they determined was the locations that were chosen, the RF engineers determined that those locations were areas of either weak or overloaded coverage on the existing system. And they tell us where they want to go. And then what we do is we go out and walk the sites, and we try to find an existing structure to mount the new antennas to that meets the coverage objectives that the RF engineers have determined they need to improve their system. These two particular locations, we were fortunate enough to work with Consumers Energy to determine two poles that were paler-made for what we needed them to be. We've gotten that approved through consumers up to this point. As soon as we get permitting completed, then Verizon will pay for the make-ready cost the consumer says to incur, and then we'll be down the road. You'll see both these sites very quickly. And when I say very quickly, I would anticipate by June or July timeframe, they would be on air.
Okay.
Fred, you were, Fred, you were saying RF, but did you say that was radio frequency or is that? What is RF?
Yes, radio, yes, radio, radio frequency engineers. Yes, sir.
And June, can you get it done sooner? Maybe May 1st?
How about May?
Well, they're smacking me, they're smacking me in the head for timeline right now, so they are chomping at the bit. It will, it will depend on how quickly consumers can get their make-ready done. And when I say make-ready, they have to do some preparation to their pole to. And when I say make-ready, they have to do some preparation to their pole to get it ready for us to go on to.
Fred, if you don't mind, Councilwoman Lauren Stanton, I have a business in town and I, you know, hear from other businesses in town. We struggle all summer long with issues with cell service and internet. When you did your walkthrough, were you walking around during the busiest timeframes? And is that when you determined the location? I'm, you know, I'm not being argumentative by any means, more just curiosity.
No, when we do the walkthrough, we're doing physical location inspection. The RF engineers take all their system data. They have all that within their purview. And when they tell us where they want us to put the poles, because they've looked at their, they look at several things. One of the big things they look at is complaints received from the general public. And they factor that into how, where they want to tell us to put their new locations.
Okay, all right.
Question.
Yes, go ahead. Dean first and Gardner.
Yeah, Fred, Scott Dean with the council. What generation technology is this? Is this four, five G? What are these?
This is, yeah, these are both four G sites. The third site that was mentioned is also four G site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Gardner.
Thank you very much for being here this evening, Councilmember Gardner. One of those sites happens to be right across the street from my house, so we'll we'll be able to report on the success of this. But more importantly, there's a question that I am not a Verizon customer. So how will this benefit anybody that's in town that is not a Verizon customer? I'm assuming there's some, I'm sure there's some agreement and sharing of this, sharing of this bandwidth with other carriers, T-Mobile, for instance, which is mine, Turner, and the others that are out there that, is this going to benefit all end users is my question?
Ooh, pregnant pause.
Yeah, well, you're a little out of my purview. That's more than I know. I know it will positively affect the coverage for Verizon customers. If they have share agreements with the other carriers, that's something I am not aware of.
Okay. So this is definitely a benefit for Verizon. Other carriers, not sure.
Not sure.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Exactly. Yes, sir.
All right, Fred, this is Garnet Lewis. So the third site, any timeframe on that one? The third location?
We've been, yeah, the third site's down on Water Street. We've been working with the Historical Society to get that into a location that makes them happy. I believe we have moved that to a location they like. As soon as they tell me it's good to go, then we will get that one in the pipeline and get it over to you for a review and vote. And I would say it's going to be about a month behind each other, too.
Okay, all right, very good.
Well, this may be an additional question after discussion this evening, but kind of getting back to what I was just asking about. Are we going to be approached by T-Mobile or are we going to be approached by other carriers, AT&amp;T, to install the same small cell technology at additional locations in town to increase the coverage for those that don't have Verizon? I don't know what that answer is, but I don't know.
Let's hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the point, the point is, no offense to Verizon, and thank you for stepping up the plate. Is to create competition. It's all market-based. So if there's a demand, they will come in and put in the infrastructure. Yeah.
Yeah. And Mayor, if I may, I think we should consider putting out a, I don't know if Scott's on, but we should probably consider putting out a press release either after this action or when this technology's up and running, just to let folks know. You know, that there should be improved bandwidth with at least this carrier since it's been such an issue during the summer.
Yeah, I would also notify affected property owners, like say within a four-black radius, two-black radius that are going to all of a sudden notice, my wife's already noticed the crews out there doing their inspections. So I think it's important to make sure that folks know that there's going to be work being done, what it is, kind of what Councilmembers Dean's comments were. I think it's just important to be transparent and give people the information about what this is going.
And the timeframe was based on Consumers Energy crews, is that what he said?
Sounds like it. All right, motion by Leo and a second by Stanton. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Anyone opposed? Nope. All right, very good. Motion passes. Thanks, Fred.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
Thanks for the science.
Yeah, all right. I know. All right, moving on, we have item H, Blue Star Trail Project.
Hey, hey.
Madam Councilwoman.
Yeah. Happy to introduce this one. So Holly and I and the engineer who's on the call had a great discussion with the Michigan Department of Transportation, talking about the application that's been submitted for the Blue Star Trail Project. As you can see in the cover page, page seventy-five, two main points after our meeting with MDOT. One is they want to see more trees. Great, we love trees. And the other issue is that they would recommend that we add a contingency to each line item in our budget that we've submitted to TAP. With that, results in an increase from ten thousand to fifty thousand. To give a much better explanation, I think we should turn over to our engineer. But Holly, I don't know if you want to lead in with a couple other points in or not.
I think that I will let Larry speak first.
Yeah.
Circle back.
All right, hi Larry, how you doing?
Good, very good. Thank you. Good evening.
Good to see you.
Thank you. So I will kind of echo what I've already heard this afternoon or this evening. And Richard kind of really nailed it, is the people with the money are asking us to make some minor revisions because they want to fund the project. So that's a pretty good, pretty good starting point. And so we added trees specifically per their request, although they call it optional. It's something that they consider pretty important, and we've had them ask before for something similar and then make it more than just an ask or an option. So I think it's a good thing. We are going to be clearing a lot of trees in just some specific areas, like going through Amelancher Park and the township. Obviously, a lot of tree clearing there. And so we have an opportunity to plant trees in other locations. And then they did encourage also to basically up our cost opinion for construction. And that being based on what they're seeing too in fluctuation of pricing, supply chain issues, and, you know, just contractor busyness and overall construction price increases. So Richard had mentioned, and they mentioned the same thing, it's easier to get more money out of them now than later. So we're just, we don't want to be overboard with this. But since they suggested it's a good opportunity to add money to the project, and they will increase their share at the seventy percent ratio, we went back to our cost opinions and tried to do that in a reasonable fashion. And so I don't know if Holly shared with you an Excel spreadsheet. But basically, we've taken the project construction cost from one point eight two five million to one point nine two zero million, which results in a total project cost now of two point two million versus the two point one million. And because it's a shared activity, then obviously it requires additional local match to meet those funding amounts. And so the way we based it was what we thought was reasonable without going overboard. And it ended up that an additional forty thousand dollar contribution to local match would be able to increase the funding significantly to where we should be a little more comfortable. We still have no guarantees on contractor pricing at this point, but it certainly is an opportunity to do it now while there's funding available. So I think everybody has kind of already gone through everything. I'd like to just open it up to any particular questions that you might have of me before you vote.
All right, any questions for Larry and council?
I guess, since this is described as a contingency, would this be sort of the last pot of money that would be accessed? Should it be needed?
That is the way that I had suggested to Holly that potentially it could be now. It's going to go at seventy percent, so you're going to have to put in a thirty percent. But if the bids come in lower, basically the entire project gets reduced and the local share also gets reduced. So it's not like the extra forty thousand is the last money used. It's still going to be used at the seventy, thirty, but if it's not needed, it won't be used.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Fox, Russ Gardner, subject city council, thanks for being here this evening. Couple of questions for you. One is I heard you just say that there's going to be a thirty percent amount of the two point two million that's going to be responsibility of probably the township and the city. Is that correct?
Yes, and, yes, the Friends of the Blue Star Trail, City of Sagatuck and Sagatuck Township.
Okay, okay, just to make sure I had the right number. Two is, is the township being approached as well to increase their match?
I think it's better for council. That question's better for council. I don't think Larry knows the answer to that.
Also, Mr. Fox, is there going to be any issue if this is delayed until the first meeting in February to allow us a chance to study this information, which we just literally received?
Right, I understand that, and I think I wouldn't say it's going to, it's not going to take you out of contention. And the risk is, that was mentioned previously. One thing is if we get this submitted by Wednesday, then we will get confirmation of the TAP grant in March prior to actually submitting the applications to the Michigan Trust Fund, the Recreation Trust Fund. And so we would be able to, in that application, state unequivocally that we have a funding commitment from TAP. Should we receive that? So if we don't submit by Wednesday, we would not get that information until more like June or July. So it wouldn't necessarily change the trust fund and TAP because they do talk to each other about which projects they're funding. But it does take away that knowledge of when you're going for the other one, you already have one in hand. The other potential is, as Richard had mentioned, is that they do fund these sequentially and every quarter. And so if for some reason there was a lot of applications in the first quarter that they thought were, you know, relevant and fundable, then potentially it could use money that Sagatuck or the Blue Star Trail could have gotten. So those are the two risk factors.
The grand application at risk if the decision's delayed until the first meeting in February.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Does not put the grand application at risk if the decision is delayed until February to allow additional study.
To somewhat, and I can't tell you to what degree because I don't know how much money they have and how much they're going to get in applications during this quarter.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two-two-zero-one-two-four-a.
All right, very good. Motion by Dean.
Second.
Second by Leo. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, the council, for the most part, has been in total agreement to move forward with this project. I don't see a forty thousand dollar contingency as requiring any additional consideration, to be honest. So I move forward.
Okay.
We vote.
Very good.
I would just like to point out that this is a two point two million dollar project. And we are, Sagatuck is only putting in, we're going from five percent or half a percent to two percent. So we have ninety-nine point five percent of our costs covered under two million one hundred and ninety-eight percent of costs covered at two point two million dollars. That's phenomenal. So I think this is very reasonable. This has been an eleven-year odyssey. Our committee has been very careful to solicit feedback from the community at every turn. We got a community survey, sixty-four responses. We had over a hundred members at our open house. We, I think we had one negative comment. The top comments were, I support all, build it, thank you for the work you put into this, looking forward to progress. If I go back to our TRICOM Parks Plan, the bike path has topped the survey results in the last two parks plan. Strongly support fifty-five percent, support twenty-five percent, neutral thirteen, oppose three, strongly oppose three. So we've got a mandate from the community to build this trail. If someone is telling us from MDOT, we are very competitive and here's what you do to maximize your competitiveness. I think we need to just, I think this is a no-brainer. I think we need to stay on track and get this done.
Very good. Yes, please.
I'm a bit concerned by the urgency around this information. I received the call from the city manager Friday giving me a heads up on this. And then the information that was included in the packet. I'm not opposed to this, but I just want an opportunity to better study it. I talked with councilmembers Becken and Truster today. They shared the same concerns and emails sent to the cities, to the mayor and the city manager today, expressing similar concerns. I don't think that there's a risk in delaying the decision to allow more questions to be asked, allow the public to weigh in. It's a five hundred percent increase in the amount that's been requested. And I have a lot of questions about that commitment on behalf of the taxpayers. I'm not willing to commit forty thousand additional dollars this evening until there's more questions answered.
Okay. All right, motion, actually, this was, the decision to place this on the agenda was mine and mine alone because I recognize the urgency of this decision. It's not something that I believe we should wait on. We allow ourselves to remain competitive by making this decision tonight, and I think that's in the best interest of the city. I've been a resident in the city for more than almost seven years. And part of the reason that I was elected to council and Holly was elected to council was this very thing. Our constituents are expecting us to get this done. So I do not see the need to delay any further, and that's why I asked to put it on the agenda. This, I won't do it often. I won't rush things along too much, but we have studied this and studied this and studied this. And at some point in time, you can only beat that horse so much, and I think we've beat it enough. So with that, any other discussion? I'll move for vote.
Yeah, I would just counter that. I don't sense the urgency, especially given the consultant's response to my question. I'm just asking the urgency as well as being a US council member. I've not been involved in any of the formal discussions and decisions regarding the grant. I'm supportive of the effort. But forty thousand dollar additional commitment on behalf of the taxpayer is not something that I'm going to go against. Additional questions? There's two other council members who, first, who are tonight, who share the same concerns.
Let me.
I'm fine. I'm going to call the question and I'm going to call the vote. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Becken, excuse, Gardner?
No.
Leo?
Yes. Yes.
Question, excuse, Dean?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passes. Very good. Thanks, everybody. All right, at this point, we're at the agenda where we're opening up to public comments on any items. Anybody would like to address council at this time, please introduce yourself and keep your comments to three minutes, please. Anybody like to address council?
Hi.
Dean, how you doing?
I'm good. How's everyone?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Once again, thank you, thank you, thank you. The one question or comment or whatever is regarding the barrier. I think it's, I think in, I think to tell people what kind of barrier they have to have, it needs to be like more detailed than just not plastic, just not rope. Because I have like planters and rope and barriers. So I don't know if that, I don't know if that needs to be in there or what, or Cindy can just go over the plans with whoever decides to have these permits? That was my only comment about that. It just seemed kind of weird to throw in a fence, but sometimes fences are plastic, but you can't have plastic. So I just didn't know if that was going to be a case-by-case situation.
Very good. Very good.
So that's my only comment. Thank you. I appreciate.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Madam Clerk, see anybody else?
I do not see any.
Who do we got?
Hi, this is Lieutenant Anfield. I just got a better connection now, so.
Who was that? How you doing?
Great, yeah, I was, I you here because I was playing basketball with my daughter, so.
The one.
But yeah, I I I did actually talk to Deputy Kling tonight and told him to address the vehicles that were parked in the roadway and in the snow removal and so forth. So I did, I did talk to the other side last time we had the big snow when it became an issue. So we will be addressing that. So if anybody else has any other questions, feel free to ask, so.
All right, very good. Good. Any other questions for Lieutenant Enstfield? Very good, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I sorry, I had technical diff, sorry, technical difficulties there, so.
It's all good. It's all good.
No worries.
All right, very good. Anybody else? Madam Clerk, see anybody? All right, very good. So we have a couple of communications in your packet. We have no closed session, so we'll move on to boards, commissions and committee reports. These are city council representatives to these boards, commissions and committees. Mr. Gardner, I think you had a report.
Planning Commission, we had a very good working session last Thursday night to begin to flesh out our 2023, 2022 and 2023 goals. Still more to be, still more work to be done. We will have issues of things that we need to address from a zoning standpoint, applications coming forward. But we've agreed that we'll be setting aside time in our upcoming meetings to focus strictly on goal development. And we're going to use a smart goal approach so we have specific actionable, measurable and timeframes around these. So we'll be running back to that in more formal manner to council here in the near future. Also, the Bald Head Work Group will be coming to council. We were planning on the first meeting in February with a recap. We're having actually Lieutenant Enstfield on the call because we're working with the sheriff to do another drone video of the entire area. So you can get a real good view of what work has been done. It's a great time of year to do it because there's no leaves to get in the way of anything. So expect at the meeting on the 14th that we'll be coming with you with a little bit more detailed information about where we are, where we stand and next steps.
Okay.
Historic District Commission, you see it in Cindy's report from planning and zoning. Basically, a new dumpster that was approved, recommended. It's just going to be at the building where Scooters is. That's the recommendation. The other choice was to be at the tall brick condominium building right behind it. But the owner of the building is saying it would work out great and they're going to have a whole new fencing area for that. So the current enclosure for the garbage by scooters on the east side of the building, that'll be all new. And they'll just add some additional containers because a lot of those condos are vacation rentals and they create a lot of garbage. So that'll be a nice new enclosure and it'll look nice. And the other thing was tabled for more information. So yeah, nothing exciting there.
Very good. All right, any other board, commissions, committee reports from the council? All right, just an update on the TRICOM Community Recycling Committee. We are having a Zoom meeting with Cassandra Ford with the Recycling Partnership. Because as you recall, we got that grant for a recycling audit. That will be our onboarding experience. That'll be open for anybody who wants to listen in on it. That'll be a project that starts, will go all year for us. It's very much an all hands on deck type of endeavor. So that will be our February meeting. And then our March meeting, we'll be getting ready for the Household Hazardous Waste Day, which will be hugely supported by Rotary. They've stepped up with $10,000. And so I'll be working with the Rotary to see if we can match that. But that was very generous on their on their behalf to support us. So that will be the focus for the March meeting. So quite, those will be two big projects for the year right off the get go. So moving right along. All right. With that, council comments?
I just want to thank the Friends of the Blue Star. I want to remark that they have spent $64,000 in total on engineering. And I'm sure that there will still be some more engineering bills. They are covering 9% of our community match, which is $205,000. And for the record, I just want to say, most municipalities have to pay that money on their own. So we are unique in the fact that we are one of the very few communities, and I think the only community C2A has worked with that has a group like the Friends that has stepped up to pay that community match. So that's our friends and our neighbors that have really done such an excellent job in our community. So they really have lightened the load. No one likes the rush of this, but there's just a tremendous amount of work that's been done by the community to get this done. So I really applaud the Friends for stepping up.
Lauren?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
All right. Russ?
No, just comments, thanks.
Scott?
I just think a compliment city staff on really proactive communication, you know, getting the word out that there's going to be power outage tomorrow and the next day in the downtown business district and really working to get that word out to the local businesses and homeowners. I really appreciate it and just kudos to the staff for for being very proactive and keeping the folks informed.
Very good. Mayor's comments, just really encouraging folks to remain safe and exercise, you know, cautions when out and about. The numbers, the Omicron numbers are starting to go down, but now is not a good time to get be getting sick. So please take care of one another. Secondly, lastly, some really good information coming our way from the federal government as far as ARPA money and then infrastructure money. We'll start to see and hear quite a bit about the infrastructure money, probably starting in April. There's a lot of good support coming to municipal governments. So I'll keep you abreast of that. The Michigan Municipal League's been really, really good about keeping people up to speed on that. So I I am cautiously optimistic that we will see some really nifty support coming our way. And talking to Ryan the other day, it's 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 quite a change for the government entities to be actually giddy about, you know, kind of one time monies. So I think we have some things to really look forward to that will see the benefit that could really, for us, be used for for a lot of the things that we've talked about today. So and some of our projects that we talked about at Strategic Planning in December. So stay tuned, I'll keep you up to date on that. I tend to call into those webinars as often as I can, so I will share that with you. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Dean, second by Gardner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, very good. All right.